This conference will now be recorded.
We ask you to protect all of our first responders, city, county, state, all who work 24/7 to serve and protect us often at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for 247 years. We ask your guidance as we participate in the most important election of our time tomorrow. Please protect all of our military and civilians serving this great country today, here and throughout the world, and return them home safely to their loved ones. And now, as we leave tonight, we ask your protection for all of us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again, and all this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall is absent. Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
Here.
All right, first item, our agenda is the service awards. For that, we'll go ahead and invite up Chief Irwin to go ahead and present.
Good evening, everybody. Just for the record, our storms are going to be south of us. We will probably be under rain most of the rest of the evening, but anything severe is going to be well south of us. So, thank you again for having me up. Tonight, we are here to celebrate Jeremy Peppin's 10-year service to the City of Sedalia Fire Department. Jeremy is a highly motivated, by the way, this did take me all day to get done. Jeremy is a highly motivated and dedicated member of this department. He truly wants to see the whole department and city grow and succeed. He is the one member who can and usually is louder than I am. And for those of you that know me, that's a very tall task to fulfill. He has an itinerary, just a list of ideas of things that need to be done within the department, one he shared with me this evening that we will be bringing to you here in the next few months. But he wears a path out between my office and the regular office areas. Jeremy has successfully completed what seems like every state certification offered by the Division of Fire Safety. They include Officer 2, Investigator, Inspector, Instructor 2, Live Fire, Technical Rescue, and many more. In his time here, he has been successfully promoted to the rank of Lieutenant, which I'm very proud of. He's also an instructor for our Fire 1 and 2 program. There are so many things that I could say about Jeremy to keep reinforcing all the great qualities about him, but if I miss one, he'll let me know tomorrow. So we'll just keep it pretty vague, in all honesty, Jeremy. I value and trust you and your dedication to this department. I rely on you every day to help me keep this department moving forward, and for that, I am thoroughly grateful. Thank you from myself and the City of Sedalia for 10 years of service. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good show.
Next, we'll go ahead and invite up Assistant City Administrator Wirt to present the next service award.
This just kind of seems like we're doing this backwards, but Mr. Shaw asked me to keep this very simple. So on behalf of the City of Sedalia and all the citizens, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good show.
All right, now we'll move on to our special awards. Before that, we'll go ahead and invite up Chief Woolery.
Good evening, council. On October 1st, Sergeant Neva Overstreet was working as an instructor for the Central Missouri Police Academy in Warrensburg when police cadet Kaylee Sanders had a critical medical emergency. Tonight, Kaylee Sanders is here to tell you about what happened and to recognize Sergeant Overstreet for her swift and professional actions.
Hi there. Obviously, you guys don't know me. My name is Kaylee Sanders. I was a cadet at the Central Missouri Police Academy. I'm hired currently by University of Central Missouri's Police Department. So we were going into a domestic violence scenario. Mind you, I don't remember any of this, okay? This is off of what everybody said to me. So I went in for my scenario, grabbed my defendant's hand. Was fine the first time. He ripped away. The second time I grabbed him, I fell back and just fell on the floor. Went into VTAC, and then I had a cardiac arrest. So Ms. Overstreet over here, she was one of the four that gave me CPR and that saved my life. You know, my husband and my son are back here today. My husband is also a police officer in Warrensburg. You know, if it weren't for her swift actions and her quick thinking, I would not be here and I would not be here for them. So I can't thank her enough.
Neva, emergencies happen unexpectedly. Your composure, compassion, and skill set was instrumental in Kaylee going home to her family. I am very proud of you, and I thank you for the compassion that you constantly show and the care for others. Very proud of you.
Okay, moving along, we have the next item is the approval of the previous session minutes. These are the council meeting minutes dated October 21st, 2024. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any amendments that need to be proposed to the minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the roll call of the standing committees. Up first, we have Public Safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
The county and the city and the ambulance district join for a joint communications budget to fund the 911 services. I believe Director Danielle Lauder is here to give us an overview of the budget, please.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to come speak to you. I know this is a lot of information to review, but I would like to start with some of our accomplishments for the year. The National Center for Missing and Exploited Children provides a certification and training opportunity for all emergency communication centers throughout the country, as well as law enforcement agencies that have the opportunity to participate in specialized training, recognition, and accreditation for how we address situations involving missing persons. In 2024, Pettis County Joint Communications became one of six emergency communication centers in the state of Missouri to receive this recognition. So out of 118 emergency centers in states, only six are certified. One of them is here in Sedalia. Another major accomplishment that we had in 2024 was our ISO ratings. I know that everyone's aware that ISO ratings affect property tax values as well as our insurance rates as homeowners in the area. There's two specific categories related to communications. It's emergency reporting and telecommunications, our training policies, and expectations. These scores directly influence the ratings that our fire departments receive. This is the first time that ISO has been rated since Joint Communications was formed, and this is the first time that all fire departments in the county received a minimum of 1 to 3-point increase in the area of communications. Individually, we received 90% in emergency reporting and a 90.44% in telecommunications training and our expectations of them. Our center activity for 2024. We're responsible for 911 services, administrative calls, as well as monitoring officer-initiated action. We have the numbers for 2022, 2023, and 2024 up through October 1st is when these numbers were pulled. Right now, we're on track to end 2024 slightly higher in 911 calls. I'm not anticipating a significant increase in the administrative calls. We were able to install a phone tree this year to help route some of the automated options available to those seeking administrative calls and routing our callers to the appropriate destination. Right now, our officer-initiated actions will probably trend up towards the end of the year, and I would anticipate that they would end on par with 2023. Something that a lot of 911 centers are scrutinized for are their answer times. The National Emergency Number Association has given a standard that 911 calls are expected to be answered 90% of the time in less than five seconds. We hold an average of 4.1 seconds to answer a 911 call, and we maintain that average 98.32% of the time. So we are well exceeding the national standard of the answer rates for 911. And as far as administrative calls, they have a 10-second answer expectation, and we are averaging 4.6 seconds to answer administrative calls for service. And with an 80% expectancy, we're exceeding that at 96.26%. Since Joint Communications formed in 2021, we have noticed a decline in the time it takes to dispatch medical emergencies. When we first initiated dispatching for medical emergencies, we started with a 52-second average answer time. In 2023, that dropped down to 44 seconds, and so far in 2024, we are at 39 seconds. That's using the AHA guidelines of 120 seconds from the point an address has been verified. So this particular time here is from the point an address has been verified in the call-taking process. It'll take us, on average, 39 seconds to actually dispatch services. And our 2025 proposed budget. Looking at 2024 versus 2025, there is a overall decrease in the expenditure line items. We had originally requested two expansion positions for 2024 that were never filled. And removing those two positions, it does decrease our overall salary and wage benefits. There is an increase in new equipment purchase that is specifically related to end-of-life to our current server. Our server at the time of purchase in 2020 was indicated to have a five-year life expectancy, and we are approaching the end-of-life of that particular piece of equipment. We do have several battery backups that are approaching end-of-life, and we are starting to receive alerts and notifications of those on a daily basis that they are nearing the end of their appropriate life cycle and to replace them as soon as possible. So with the increases in the new equipment that we would need for the server replacements, the decrease in salary and wage, we also have a significant decrease in the telephone line item. We were able to replace the copper analog phone lines this year. They transitioned away from the overly expensive copper pots lines to a wireless backup. There was no interruption to service to our administrative lines, so we now have that wireless backup installed, and it's actually saving us just over $10,000 a year. Comparing the expenses from 2024 to 2025, the expenses overall are decreasing $75,000. The current contractual contributions don't quite make up enough for the specific expenditures. We have salary line item at 742,000, benefits 305, supplies and equipment at 459, totaling 1.5 for expenditures. And our base revenue sources with the any-device fee, which, if you're not familiar with that, it is $1 charged to your wireless plan for any device with the capability of accessing 911 services. There is a small percentage that is retained at the retailer for administration of those funds, as well as a small percentage that is retained with the Department of Revenue. We have the statewide prepaid tax, which is distributed across the entire state for specific prepaid purchases. It is not towards the purchase of a device and is only applying to any prepaid purchase greater than $15. So if someone is only purchasing $15, there's no tax item on that. The original contracts would indicate that Pettis County would contribute $200,000, the City of Sedalia 300, Pettis County Ambulance District 150, approximate interest of $1,000, and miscellaneous fees of $200 associated with our Sunshine Run audio records requests. Those revenues total 1.1, and that leaves a significant deficit. To balance the budget with a zero balance at the end of 2025, there is a required increase to make that happen, and the specific number would be... I'm sorry, I forgot to flip my pages as I was going through. $135,268.81 per contributing agency. I know that that is a significant increase over previous years, and that is a big ask, but due to the fact that we have eliminated all of our rollover funds year after year, and we are now at a zero-balance budget, increasing revenue sources is going to be required to maintain that balance. The advisory board has been in conversation regarding other funding options. Right now, it's just a discussion, and additional research is required to determine what the appropriate course of action would be for the agency as well as the community. This information is here just for reference only. Across the state of Missouri, 48% of the counties participate in a 911 sales tax that's dedicated specifically to 911 services. 20% are funded through general revenue or a law enforcement tax with specific recognition for 911. Only 9% of the states use a any-device fee. I'm sorry, 9% of the counties use a any-device fee, and 23% of the counties are using a wireline tax of up to 15%. Looking forward, there's always going to be challenges with any agency, and the challenges that we face within Joint Communications specifically regard staffing, mental health, and wellness, as well as technology. The National Emergency Number Association recently published their Staffing Retention Report, and 82% of 911 centers report that they are understaffed by up to 34%. As of right now, we are fully staffed. I've got three operators in training, and once they are released, we'll have a fully-staffed and operational center. An additional task or challenge that face a lot of 911 centers is that while they are understaffed, they also lack the necessary budget to expand their workforce by up to 75% of those centers. They just don't have the funding to maintain what they need. Our mental health and wellness program, if you are not familiar with what we have in Joint Communications, we have a multi-tiered approach to what we do. I've had other agencies in the state reach out and ask for guidance in how to make that happen. We have a program that is integrated into our computer-aided dispatching service that monitors the overall workload and stress associated with each call taker. That we receive alerts if someone is approaching critical stress thresholds. We also have on-staff counseling sessions that come in for critical debriefings, and they're available for emergency telehealth sessions as well. They come in once every three months, and they provide in-person appointments to all of our staff. That has been very well-received, and I've had several operators comment that they do appreciate that service. And I've had several operators from other agencies indicate that it is much welcomed to have that. Additionally, as far as mental health and wellness, a recent study has come out that up to 31% of active-duty dispatchers could potentially show symptoms for PTSD due to their acute stress levels associated with the increased call volume. And as far as technology, our 911 lines are currently still on camera trunks, and those are the analog lines. We are looking forward to a next-gen platform, and hopefully by the end of 2025, that will be something that we can report as an accomplishment for them, because it is a project on the horizon. Do you have any questions?
Counselor or administrative staff, any question?
I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
And why is it that there aren't any other cities that are contributing to this? Because all the calls for the entire county come to the same center, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So could you explain that to me, please?
We do answer all the calls for the entire county, and as part of the contracts that were written prior to Joint Communications standing up in 2020, it was determined that $150,000 would be contributed from the Pettis County Ambulance District, $150,000 for the City of Sedalia Police Department, $150,000 for the City of Sedalia Fire Department, and then $150,000 for the Sheriff's Office. The additional $50,000 from the Pettis County Commission covers the smaller municipalities that would include the cities of Lamont, Smithon, and Greenridge. Those cities combined produce less than 5% of our call volume. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to review this. I didn't get it in time to review. But just in the short time I had to review, why is it that what you're showing on your slide is significantly more than what's in your current budget?
Which line item?
The salaries and wages and benefits. You're showing that 2024 was $1,147,219, but when you look at the county's budget and what was presented last year and what was in the budget, the adopted budget, was $826,000. So that's $320,000 more than what's actually in the budget.
Okay, so from 2023 to 2024, there was a discrepancy between the rollover amounts that was projected to be there versus what was actually rolled over. And that discrepancy came because there was a previous agreement to have additional contributions from the contributing agencies that were never fulfilled.
No, I'm not talking about the revenue. I'm talking about your expenditures for wages, for personnel.
Okay, because of the rollover error in that calculation and the closing of the county budget on January 31st to go into January, they had to make an accommodation and adjust that to make it balance out as far as the budget.
Adjust what?
They took the error in rollover out of salary and wages to make it balance for the budget.
Okay, and that's basically what you're spending right now?
Yes.
Okay. So why is your... What you're saying is in the budget now is more than what's actually in your budget?
I would have to get reports from Kim and look at it line by line and figure out the specific answer for that. Okay? Any other questions?
Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, Director Lauder.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think that's everything for public safety. Moving along to public works, Chairman Hillary of the floor.
Okay, I've got six items tonight. First item is strategic planning presentation by Justin Bray, our presenter. Justin Bray, our operator director, will continue this year's presentation. Strategic planning for each department. Director Bray will present this meeting. An overview of the plans for street, sanitation, solid waste disposal, and right-of-way maintenance departments. As a reminder, I ask that in each of the individual presentations that they may address the following four questions. Why is the service needed? Why should the city be doing it? What level of service are we providing now? And how are we going to accomplish it? In other words, strategic going forward for the services, including any major budget requests related to new or expanded intervals. Contributions are a vital part of our continuous effort to enrich and improve Sedalia. We thank you for gathering these guidelines and helping us maintain the quorum of this important process. So Justin, come on up, please.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Evening.
So I've got a lot of information to go through, so I'm going to try to go through it pretty quick. So, starting off with the street division. So our overall goals and our tasks that we do, you know, we do everything from mill and overlay, snow plowing, crack sealing, chip sealing, concrete work, with that being sidewalks, curbs, driver approaches, as well as any kind of roadway markings, signal and sign repairs, so hanging new signs, putting new signals up, tree trimming, culvert pipes replacement, ditching, those sorts of tasks. So we do that with a staff of 2022 dedicated just to those. We do that year-round. Some things obviously are dedicated to spring work, summer work, fall work, winter work. Progress on this year's projects. Everything that we've put out to do, we've gotten completed. Currently, right now, we are working on the 7th Street, or I'm sorry, the Ohio alleys, one block east and one block west of Ohio. There's a few of them in there that we've already completed throughout the years. So we've reevaluated a few of them, and moving on down the road, we're going to do about six or seven different sections in the alley. So what that means for tonnage, estimated, we're going to be doing right around 9,000 to 9,200 tons of asphalt, which is astronomical for a municipal group to do. We're keeping up with most of the big companies such as Higgins and Capital Materials. So we're throwing down a lot of mix out of our machine. Moving on to the next slide. Tree trimming. Even though we are extremely busy with asphalt, we're still absorbing a lot of our own tree trimming. We have fairly new bucket trucks. We're able to continue doing that work. We do unfortunately have to outsource some of the trimming and some of the tree removals just because of the sheer size and stuff. Our bucket truck only goes about 42 foot, so anything over that, if it's unsafe for our guys to do, we outsource them, as well as scheduling conflicts. So we've been continuing working on safe routes to school. So if anybody's kind of noticed, we've been putting up some new signage, some new color schemes in school zones, trying to brighten them up, showing people, you know, that you're in a school zone, that you're ending in a school zone, exiting a school zone. So working on crosswalks and also working on some ADA complacency stuff. So for winter, we've got some potential use for salt, but showing that it's going to be a milder winter, wetter than normal. So hopefully, our salt usage won't be too high this year. So fingers crossed. Progress on the things that we do during throughout the year. I'm not going to go through every one of those because I've already pretty much done it, but, you know, as the work needs to happen, we're continuing to do the work. Moving on to the next project, so we're going to start working on crack sealing. It's this time of year we work on crack sealing in the cooler months. It allows for proper curing inside the crack and doesn't allow cracking. Okay, so request for fiscal year 2026 for a mill and overlay of streets, depending on the redway asset service scan that we had done, which is a comprehensive... on the roadway asset service scan that we had done, um, which is a comprehensive scan and plan for us to help us make, um, a little bit better guesses moving forward than our guesses, but, um, you know, decisions moving forward. So, um, depending on those scans, um, these are basically a carryover from the years prior. Um, and then also with Grand, Twentieth to South City Limits being number one on the, on the priority list once the water lines are installed. Um, also with alleys, um, everything, um, the alleys that run along Broadway from the east side of town, uh, East City Limits basically to Ingram, uh, those are our primary trash truck route, so those are the ones that I do want to try to get encompassed into next year's work. Um, there's a lot of areas in those that are failing, uh, that we need to address. So. Uh, so request for next year, um, we have four dedicated haul trucks and ten dump truck slash plow trucks. Um, those dump trucks slash plow trucks are exactly that. They're also haul trucks, but they all are also our plow trucks and, and, um, and spreader trucks. So currently, we have five of them down with raging, or ranging repair issues. Um, so moving forward, I'd like to have a little bit more uniformity across the board in the fleet. Um, and what that means for, for us is we have such a variety of assets that we have in the operations department. So whether that be a, an oil distributor, a, um, spreader truck, a dump truck, a haul truck, they all have different functions, and there may be sometimes in the year that we're using dump trucks for nine months out of the year, and then we have a patch truck that's sitting there dormant for, for, you know, those nine months or longer. Um, so moving forward, there, they offer a platform that is a hook, hook style truck, which is basically the same thing as a container truck. Um, but you put different beds on those and can do different functions. So, you know, to use the phrase, the wheels keep turning, um, is a, is a good mindset to have, so we can lower our overall assets, have some attachments, and keep the wheels turning on, on the trucks that we got. So, um, kind of get the bigger, the, the most bang for your buck whenever you're buying trucks.
Those pictures are salt and?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, salt, just a regular flatbed, that, the gray box is a salt spreader?
Yes, sir.
Regular flatbed and a dumpster, I think.
Yes.
Green, okay.
So they?
Oh, and it's got a blade on the front, too. Okay, thanks. I get it.
Okay. Any other questions on the streets?
Questions, counsel?
Okay, moving on to sanitation. Uh, so, um, these are pictures of our, of our newer trucks. The one up top is our smaller rearload, that is our reserve truck. Um, obviously the one below it is our new tandem axle rearload truck, it's twenty-five yard, and then, uh, out with the old men with the new. So, um, the above truck is the Max that we've had all the issues with. Um, and our, our last, newest truck just showed up last week. Uh, we're upfitting it with the RARED system, the cart scanners, and the data collection. Hopefully, we will have it deployed by Wednesday of this week. So, um, okay. Uh, so, um, we pick up trash four days a week. I'm just going to do a just, I'm not going to redo it all. Um, we've picked up so far from April to now, uh, roughly almost five thousand tons of trash, um, or basically nine million pounds, almost ten million pounds of trash since April. Um, so clean sweep, we picked up five hundred sixty-one tons of trash. That's, um, a lot as well. Um, we have twice monthly pickups for yard dirt and tree debris, uh, two hundred sixty-nine pickups. Um, and overall, our best overlooked service is our container rental. Um, so, uh, we have ranging container sizes from two, four, six-yard, uh, dumpsters, and then also ten and thirty-yard containers. Um, overall, that is the best bang for your buck for pickup, um, whether that be for, um, you know, uh, large cleanouts, uh, construction, uh, demolition of, of remodeling in your houses or whatever that may be. So. Uh, so our goals are to continue to encourage community involvement, uh, increase awareness about the option to rent a container for waste disposal. Um, we're also wanting to work on getting our sanitation drivers safer. Um, so overall, sanitation work is ranked as the fifth highest, uh, in the country as well as any kind of driver, truck driver. So safety is everybody's responsibility, so that, that's, it takes a village to be safe, so we push that forward pretty hard. Um, upgrading our equipment, obviously, we've, we've been working hard on that this year, so we've upgraded quite a bit of our equipment sanitation, uh, such as LEDs, um, brighter lights, uh, being able to have better visibility with cameras, backup cameras, um, and, um, just moving forward, uh, overall, being safe. Current staffing that we have is eight total in sanitation with one crew supervisor, administrative assistant, and four equipment operator twos, and two labors. Uh, so the amount of trash that we're picking up is with that crew, uh, which is another pretty good feat to pick up that much trash with eight people. Um, so would like to try to, again, overall wrapping back up, back to the street slide with operations as a whole, update our fleet as, as a unit with the container trucks in mind and the swap letter trucks in mind for sanitation as well. Um, again, keep the wheels turning and make sure that we're utilizing all of our equipment to the best that we can. Um, so our current challenges, um, are, are our rates. Um, our current rates do not allow for equipment replacement, so we've had to do internal, uh, loans through the, um, through the general fund to be able to get our, our equipment replaced. Um, and then we have to try to repay the general fund out of, out of low rates. Um, so our rates are much lower than comparable cities, um, in our, in our area, um, and as well as private trash companies and services. Um, so we need, um, we need to try to move forward to a volume-based system, um, um, as well as recycling. Um, the more that we recycle, the less, um, material is going into the landfill, which then is lowering our overall bill. Uh, so volume-based trash services, um, we would provide different sized carts for customers based on their usage and needs. So overall, what that means is that people that only need thirty-five gallons will pay for thirty-five gallons. People that need ninety-five or more will pay for the ninety-five or more. So it's truly based on what they're using. Um, it is a fair system, it allows people, people to pay for that. Um, and then with recycling, um, it helps lower your overall usage going to the landfill. So, overall, it ties in together. Any questions on sanitation?
Does counsel have any questions?
I have a question about, uh, uh, tree service. Do you think it'd be cost-saving for the city to purchase a, a vehicle to take care of the big trees also without contracting them out?
Um, I can look into it, sir. Um, I think that the last, the last bucket truck that we bought, um, was around a hundred and twenty, don't quote me totally, but it was about a hundred and twenty or a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Um, to get to a truck that will go to that height, um, you're looking at roughly two to three hundred thousand. Um, so with what we're paying for outsourced trees, um, it's, it'd be basically washed by the time that we'd have to replace it. But I can definitely look into it and give you a, a better answer.
Right. They're saying now that there's no, uh, comparison, uh, to contract this out versus purchasing a vehicle to, uh, trim the big trees, you know?
Yeah.
Now, the city has a stump grinder, don't, don't we?
Yes, sir, we have to.
A grinder on stumps?
Yes, we have to.
I see. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Yeah, Justin.
Yes, sir.
When you check into that, you might check with Evergy and see if they have any good used truck. You know, I think they rotate their trucks every two years, and then some of those pole trucks with a bucket on them that they use would probably be suitable to use for tree trimming. Might check with them to see if they have anything, and if they did, what, what they would, you know, would want for that.
Okay.
We don't want some more out, but, you know.
Right. Yes, I'll, I'll do that.
Any other questions, counsel?
Okay, so for mowing and alley maintenance, uh, so this is just a few of the pictures of the services that we do. Uh, emergency tree pickup as well, uh, with street department, mowing, right-of-ways. Um, so we mow cut weeds in all of the, uh, Sedalia land, um, including the Sedalia landfill, the animal shelter wastewater equalization basins, um, the Springfield Lake, yeah, the U.P. property, the rail spur, um, and our city right-of-way and or safety line of site issues. Um, so right-of-way mowing, uh, we have mowed one thousand two hundred ninety properties, uh, multiple times a year, um, three hundred and eleven right-of-ways as well, multiple times a year. Um, and we have conducted some abatement mowing, waste cleanups, and assisted with some demos. Um, in the late fall and winter, public safety, um, takes priority, so what we try to do is we try to maintain all of our line of site issues and right-of-way, um, issues that we have. So in the wintertime, that's what one of our primary goals is, as well as the alleys and trimming up, um, all of our ditchways. Also, we provide, uh, personnel to sanitation and recycling division on short days. Um, so if we are short-staffed on those days, we transfer people over there to help with collection. Uh, the staffing for mowing alley maintenance is six total. We have one crew supervisor, three equipment operator twos, and two labors. So all that mowing that we do all year round, is done with the, with a total of six people. Um, so moving forward for our alley, um, grading and repair, um, we started doing this last year. We retained most of our millings and started spreading them out in our alleyways. Um, this adds for a better, um, total surface for our alleys that will actually last longer, helps fill in our, all the potholes. Um, and it basically recrust over time, so turns it basically into asphalt. Uh, request for FY twenty-six is, um, I would like to add another equipment operator one for container rentals. Uh, right now, I'm, I'm having to pull people from streets and sanitation, uh, frequently to help move, move containers, um, and as well as to have two labors, so I can run two, three-man crews, and as well to fit, fill in on sanitation services, uh, for there to be a total in mowing and alleyway. That's all I got on that. Is there any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
Three, three, four. Okay, materials management side, this is the last one, I promise. So our goal is to provide, uh, reliable recycling opportunities for, for the residents via brush, leaves, glass, grass, metals, electronics, and HHW, which is hazardous household waste. We also want to attract and build and retain the skilled workforce that meets the demands of our growing community, um, offering affordable recycled products for gardening and landscaping. For future, I would like to allow for card payment at the facility, facility to simplify the process, so there's not as much traffic to and from City Hall and or phone calls to and from City Hall. Um, I would also like to add a scale, um, or scale house to add for more accurate measurements for pavement, so people are truly getting what they're getting, are paying for what they're getting. Um, our current products, uh, we have bio-blend compost, which uses pressed material from, from the, um, from the plants and is added in and, and create the, the compost blend. Um, we have screen mulch, our overs, which is over our oversized wood chips, four inches and up, our wood chips, those three inches and us, uh, under, and our asphalt millings. Uh, for new products for next year, we would like to add, um, colored mulch, our man soil, which man soil is exactly what it sounds like, is man-made soil, is something that we're kind of mad scientists dealing with, and then we're, we're building, uh, uh, our own soil amendments, and we've been using it around town quite a bit. It's, it's working great. Um, as well as natural blend compost, um, and also would like to add delivery of all products within city limits and or possibly to Pettis County, um, with delivery rates to, to vary from there. And then for fiscal year requests for next year, um, we have a two thousand eight nine thirty H wheel loader that does need to be replaced. Um, we would like to add a drive-on scale on a scale house. Uh, we would like to add the additional concrete walls for our zones. We added two this year. Um, what this does is it helps control the temperature and keep everything in zones and allows for those zones to cook individually and not merge with other zones. Um, and then we'd also like to add a brush grinder to be able to grind all the brush and house, um, and also help with our own, uh, compost and, uh, mulch production, and then add a camera or security system. That's all I have. Is there any, any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Do you have a cost estimate on the scale and scale house?
Um, I do. I don't remember the exact number, sir.
Okay.
But I can get that information to you pretty quickly.
Very good.
Thanks, Justin.
All right, thank you. Uh, what do I do with this?
Just lay it down.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, next. The airport has substantial land surrounding the runways as a buffer area in order to limit exposure to safety hazards to and from the operations. To put this land to good use, the city has worked with local farm operation to lease the ground to produce crops and hay. The current lease is due to expire, and staff has negotiated a new lease with Hemick Farms. This, this lease term is for five years with an option for clearing an additional nine and a half acres, and will increase the term an additional two years. The rental rate for the, for the props, uh, the original rate for the approximately two hundred and seventy-five acre, two hundred and fifteen tillable is fifty thousand dollars per year. We need an, we need a, we're asking for ordinance for this.
All right, call for reading of the ordinance authorizing an agreement leasing the farmland.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety-eight. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the leasing of farmland adjacent to the Sedalia Regional Airport.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety-eight. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the leasing of farmland adjacent to the Sedalia Regional Airport.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham is absent, Marshall is absent, so you have six chess, two absent.
Bill passed.
Okay, next is improving the intersection of Highway sixty-five and State Route B and Thirty-Second Street has been very highly, high priority for the city for several years. We were finally able to get the attention of the Regional Planning Commission a couple years ago to evaluate our priority rating there as well. With these priority ratings, Representative Pollitt, with the support and assistance of Senator Crawford, was able to carry an initiative through the state budget to allocate four point seven million dollars for this project. Staff has worked with Missouri Department of Transportation to coordinate the approach to making these improvements. MoDOT has proposed an agreement to allow the city to manage the project with their oversight and approvals. The agreement requires approval of city council by ordinance to execute. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance so that we can move forward with this important work. As mentioned earlier, our gratitude goes out to our local state legislatures for making this funding viable to our community. There's much-needed improvements which would not be possible without their efforts.
I call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety-nine. An ordinance authorizing a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Planning, Design, and Construction and Road Improvements Agreement.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill authorizing the agreement. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four one ninety-nine. An ordinance authorizing a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Planning, Design, Construction, and Road Improvements Agreement.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, and I have a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding this bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham is absent, Marshall? Oldham is absent, Marshall is absent, and Bogus.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Bill passes.
Okay, the airport utilizes an on-call engineer arrangement to assist with planning and project management for capital improvements. Periodically, we go through the process to select such an engineering firm to consult with. Then we are we're able to secure funding to move projects forward. We can enter an agreement for the specific project. Derek Dotson, our airport director, has been successful in securing grants to move forward with the rehabilitation of the taxiway and the north section of the runway. Recommend approval of the agreement for the design to move these projects forward.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement with the consultant.
Bill number twenty twenty four two hundred. An ordinance authorizing an aviation project consultant agreement.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty four two hundred. An ordinance authorizing an aviation project consultant agreement.
Final passage?
Second. I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? We heard none, roll call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham is absent, Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
The next item I had, we're asking for a couple ordinances in twenty twenty two. The solar arrays at the water filtration plant suffered flood damage. The city's insurance covered this. Their adjusters estimate of the cost to repair the equipment to its original state in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. However, staff recommends that as these units are replaced, they also raise the evaluation to prevent elevation, I'm sorry, to prevent the recurrence of flood damages. During the budgeting process, a hundred and twenty two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars appropriated for this line item. The sole bid for these repairs and improvements came in at a hundred and thirty nine thousand, and we recommend it be approved.
All right, so as this is a budget amendment, we have a resolution and two ordinances in relation to this matter. We'll call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution twenty one fourteen. A resolution of the City Council of City Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve in a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding the resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll call for the reading of the ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Bill number twenty twenty four two oh one. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five regarding water solar array repairs.
Second reading.
Second. I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty four two oh one. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five regarding water solar array repairs.
Final passage?
Second. I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham is absent, Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Bill passes. Now we'll call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter, and this is the one accepting the quote for the repairs.
Bill number twenty twenty four two oh two. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for repair and elevation of solar array at the water filtration plant.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Heard none, all those in favor?
Bill number twenty twenty four two oh two. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for repair and elevation of solar array at the water filtration.
Passage.
Okay.
Motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham is absent, Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Bill passes.
Okay, last item, as we've been discussed with the council in February of this year, the Missouri Department of Transportation Bridge Inspectors discovered significant issues with the Washington Street Bridge over the railroad tracks. Due to severity of the findings, the city of Sedalia immediately closed the bridge to all traffic to ensure public safety. As reported in July, the city has been partnered with the H C R Incorporated to develop a comprehensive plan for repairs. As part of the phase one of the recommendations, the bridge was reopened to allow northbound traffic only for a period, with the goal remaining to restore two-way traffic. As part of the next phase of this work to reopen the bridge to two-way traffic, city crews are addressing corrosion by removing paint and rust from the bridge structures. While this primary work is underway, H C R Incorporated is finalizing detailed plans and specifications for the necessary repairs. To expedite the repair, we have assigned a city crew to begin working on this project. They will need materials, tools, fencing, and other essential supplies to complete the project. Additionally, we must account for the costs of engineering and the final permanent repairs when planning the budget. Current estimates place the repair expenses at a minimum of three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, with the engineering costs projected at seventy five thousand dollars bringing a total of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Since these repairs were not included in the current budget appropriations, a budget amendment is required.
All right, as this is a budget amendment, we'll have a resolution and ordinance in relation to this matter. We'll call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution twenty one fifteen. A resolution of the City Council of City Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion to approve in a second. Do I have any council discussion? We heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll call for the reading of the ordinance amending the budget.
Bill number twenty twenty four two oh three. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five regarding Washington Street Bridge Repair.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passed.
Bill number twenty twenty four two oh three. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five regarding Washington Street Bridge Repair.
Motion approved.
Second.
Approve in a second. Do I have any further discussion regarding the bill?
Okay, so this is something, can I, sir? This is something the county said that they would help us with. We we do this, we if we are, when we present our bills, we can we move that back into revenue? If they do send us any reimbursements, so that we would do that? Yeah. Okay, I just want to make that clear.
Any other council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham is absent, Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
All right, Bill pass.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Hiller. Up next, we have Finance Administration. Chairwoman Bogus, you have the floor.
There is one item for consideration through the Finance Administration Committee tonight. In accordance with the state statutes, each year council must, by ordinance, call for a general election to be held for the expiring terms of city elected officials. So tonight, we're calling for an ordinance for that.
All right, I'm going to call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the general election.
Bill number twenty twenty four two oh four. An ordinance calling a general election to be held on April eighth, twenty twenty five for the purpose of electing one councilman from each of the four wards in the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty four two oh four. An ordinance calling a general election to be held on April eighth, twenty twenty five for the purpose of electing one councilman from each of the four wards in the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Oldham is absent, Marshall is absent, Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
And Robinson.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Bill passed. Thank you, Chairwoman. Up next, we have Community Development. Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just have one item this evening. The city's economic development efforts and successes are largely dependent on workforce development, which in turn is dependent upon the Sedalia two hundred school district and State Fair Community College. Last year, council adopted a resolution to waive the permit fees for the expansion at S F C C that was centered primarily on their programs developing skills to support area businesses. These programs overlap with Smith Cotton High School classes to build these skill sets essential to maintaining the workforce necessary to keep the community thriving. S C H S is likewise currently doing a substantial amount of construction that will enhance the skill development of our youth. Further, a good share of the current construction is developing assets that the whole community will benefit from and expanding upon the opportunities for sports tourism, which is another significant driver of our local economy. Thereby, the S C H S projects should be viewed in this light of creating general public benefit and could thereby warrant consideration of assistance from the city. Further, as discussed when setting up the partnership to save the to save the school district funds by helping them with the parking and roadway repairs, the city and school district serves many of the same taxpayers. Dr. Fraley Superintendent requested assistance for reductions in the amount of the permit fees for the construction projects. For the reasons stated herein, staff recommends council adopt a resolution to rebate the permit fees to the Sedalia two hundred school district for the current projects. Staff recommends a rebate structure rather than a waiver for two primary reasons. First, some of the permits have already been obtained and paid for. Second, rebates ensure that the school receives the benefit and the funds do not get buried in the contractor's billings and the savings come to the school.
Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution twenty one sixteen. A resolution of the City Council of City Sedalia, Missouri to rebate permit fees for proposed Sedalia number two hundred school district projects as an economic development partner in workforce development and sports tourism.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve this resolution, a second, do I have any council discussion regarding the resolution?
Andy, didn't we go in and repay some of their lots?
That was part of a M O U that we did with them earlier in the year. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Resolution passes. Moving along to our next item, this would be the liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
We have one renewal tonight. Paige Shear doing businesses at Local Tap at seven hundred South Ohio for liquor by the drink.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding the approval of this liquor license? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Have we any miscellaneous items from the city council or city administration?
I just, go ahead. No, ladies first.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that helped with the Little Hunted House that we did on Halloween. We had a ton of kids. We ran out of candy and Bob scared the heck out of a lot of kids to get a great job. No, but it was a lot of fun and and the kids seemed to really, really like it. We had a wonderful turnout, so I wanted to thank everybody.
I second that. We're really proud of P D and Fire for being there.
Thank you to all the city employees that put in a lot of time and effort.
Yeah.
It was great. Thank you.
I just want to say I can't be here Wednesday, but anyone that wants to talk, six six oh two eight one four one five four. The way it's been going, it's been two or three people. Be glad to meet anybody. Call me and we'll set up a time or text me, get it in my queue. But I can't be here this Wednesday at noon. So please spread the word.
Any other councilman?
The only thing I was going to say was is, again, Halloween was was well attended. The downtown event was brought lots of people down. Just, we're entering the holiday season, so there will be a lot going on. And remind everybody to shop local. The Small Business Saturday is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So there Jolie and Sherry are doing a bunch of stuff to promote that. And then lastly, don't forget to vote.
Yeah. Anyone else?
All right, having heard none, we'll go ahead and move on to the good and welfare portion of the meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone of the framework of this segment. Each speaker's request to step forward, clearly state their name, address. Will be allotted three minutes to present their statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with the council. The ward is a period of question and answer. It is a time for you to make your voice heard, for us to listen, and your statements to be entered into the public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to community management. We'll go ahead and begin with that.
Lord be with me. Strengthen those who need courage. Amen. Councilman Steve. If I recall correctly, you said Pettis County could pull free permits to work on the old newspaper rag, the Sedalia Democrats building. In the same spirit of generosity, I would respectfully request all active duty, honorably discharged veterans and contractors working for us to be allowed to work to pull free permits on our own homes to do work. City Administrator Shaw, it would be appropriate and respectful for you to stand while I address you specifically. Kelvin, take another job the city has to offer and finish out your retirement. Please step down as city administrator. We, the people, citizens of Sedalia, can no longer afford your failures and your refusal to take responsibility for them. Blaming others and enacting retribution on those who speak out against your incompetent job performance is reprehensible. If God has given us free will, are we not responsible for what we do and what we fail to do? City Administrator Shaw, it's time to resign. Not very many months ago, David Goodson made this public comment. Attention, Sedalia residents. I sure wish the city of Sedalia would livestream their council meetings on YouTube or Facebook or a commonly used platform. I have inquired as to why they won't do this. It's because Albert Reine has requested them to do so and will not stop asking. Pretty childish in my book. Albert has a great point. These meetings should be easy for the public to see and attend virtually. Give the city a call today and ask them to put their city council meetings on a credible streaming source. Hashtag transparency. I reside at ten twenty two West Seventh Street with the most beautiful and kind and professionally accomplished woman I know, and I love her with all my heart. Congratulations on your retirement, sweetheart. I am Albert Reine.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Reine.
Now, you're not going to trip me ever with everybody.
Mr. Reine, I would like to thank you for your military service. And Mr. Hiller, military service, Ms. Vance. Is there anyone else in the audience that has served the military? I'd like to personally thank each and every one of you. Next Monday, we're having Veterans Day Parade. So come down to the Veterans Day Parade Monday, starts at what, ten o'clock?
All right, go ahead and state your name and address.
My name is Michael Cook, and I now live in Lamont. I moved to Sedalia in nineteen ninety three after I got out of the United States Army. I've lived here and up until two years ago. I had businesses in town, I had rental property in town, I sold everything and left. Last week, I had no intention of coming down here. I had no intention of coming back to Sedalia. Last week, people unknown to me and unrelated to me relayed a story to me that employees of the city of Sedalia and elected officials, some of whom are in this room, was telling my business with the city of Sedalia to this person, a private citizen in the city of Sedalia. This pissed me off, as you might understand. I've had conflicts with the city today with my business. I decided it was untenable and left. I now have another profession where I talk for. I now have another profession where I talk for a living. I also dedicated my life to God and to say only what he has me to say. Every morning, I pray that God forgives me of my many sins and in doing so, that he shows me who I must forgive, as the Lord's Prayer says. I had a mind to come down here and just go off on y'all. I had a mind to go on my national podcast and go off on y'all. But God said no. He said, forgive. So I stand here today to each and every member of the government of Sedalia that I forgive you. I forgive you for the strife we've had. I forgive you for someone gossiping around town. But in that happening, as I was listening to what God was saying to me as he was chewing me out, he said, I want you to bring a message. And I've brought messages, a word of the Lord, many times since I've dedicated my life to Christ, since I rededicated to my calling and my anointing. This is what he says to the city of Sedalia. This is Luke twenty, beginning at verse forty-six. It says, beware of the teachers of the law. They walk around in flowing robes and love to be greeted with respect in the marketplace and have the most important seats in the synagogue and the place of honor at banquets. They devour widows' homes and for show make lengthy prayers. These men will be punished severely. Thus saith the Lord. The city of Sedalia, I see you. My people have cried out to me for revival and for an awakening in Sedalia, but I would not relent because of the things they've done in the government of Sedalia in the dark, in the back rooms. He says, I even know your thoughts in your bed chambers. He says, repent.
Mr. Cook, your time has expired.
And turn from your wicked ways. Unless I come like Nineveh. You can have the blessings or you can have the curse. Oh, I have to do one more thing. I wash my hands.
All right. Anybody else? Move on up.
My name is Gary Oldball. I, I live at eight twenty-one South Hundredth Avenue. I just got a couple things. I was wondering if this four hundred and fifty thousand repair on the Street, Washington Street Bridge, is that in addition to any Union Pacific money? Was Union Pacific contacted to maybe help with this? Are the state, is that any state money is involved in this also? And another, another thing, I might have had this request earlier before, but I have short-term memory. I wasn't sure. I may have to write an address for you guys. But when we're presenting stuff here, it's on the screen. No, I mean, if it, if it's a paper copy, I can look it over. I can't remember what was on the screen. So I would appreciate if you're going to have presenters have backup on the agenda, maybe. You know what they're going to present, or you should know what they're going to present, and just add it to the agenda. So we'll have a paper copy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oldball. Anyone else? What's the matter with you? You okay? Did you just get a cramp?
I had a lot of pops that came with that rise.
I see her every day, and she usually doesn't live like that.
Well, it's the end of the day. Renee Vance, one nine eight one three, Tangle Nut. Tonight's briefing is very short and sweet. We have our quarterly Sedalia Senior Center fundraising dinner on Sunday, the tenth. It is a turkey dinner, dressing mashed potatoes, green beans, rolls, and homemade desserts for fifteen. We'll be serving from eleven to one. You all are invited. We'd love to have you. And also, we do have vacancies for volunteer drivers. If you've got an hour a week or a month, once, once a month, we'd love to have some drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vance.
I liked your shirt. Show it to everybody.
Well, they, they're seeing it from this.
Anyone else? All right. Hey, can I do one thing real quick? Ann Kyle asked me, can I do this as a person without running down there? The, the, is anybody with Christ Trinity Church? They're having, well, so it's not going to be very good. I tried to call Mother Ann. They have an empty bowl for Christ Trinity Church, and it's, it's to help feed people, but I couldn't get her on the phone before a meeting. So you'll have to find that information out, or I'll get it posted somehow. But Christ Trinity is doing something here pretty quick, and they're calling at the empty bowl. And I'll get Ann Kyle and get that information out to you. But she's at Episcopal Church and at Christ Trinity Lutheran. All right, with that, we have nothing for closed, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, a second to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
A motion, a second. Any council discussion regarding the adjournment of this meeting? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Me neither.